So I believe that their value is fair and equitable.
And they are a good value also, right? As far as a grade, are there a good grade on this also?
Yes, yes. I only put good land grades on my comps, yes.
Okay.
I think this is the lady that had a few properties.
This is the husband and wife.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They have a filtered view of the lake now because the trees are growing up.
Right.
It's right at the bottom of Pondrosa Shores, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, kind of.
Okay. Based on what we're hearing, let's see, and then the research.
Yeah, the subject property is listed at the bottom of that comp sheet so you can compare it. It sits in between.
Looks like we're well within the acceptable limits as presented by the appraisers. And I'm going to make a motion that we deny N A 22174.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's that? Appeal number two, sorry.
N A 22174.
Thank you.
This one, this will not apply anything else.
If you need something, I'll pull it up online, we can look at it.
It takes me half an hour to get it up, so.
Don't worry about it. Which one's next?
A A 22436.
36, the one that's handwritten, Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, I just caught it like a half an hour ago. So I'm going through my pile of phone calls and emails that came in after the deadline.
Oh, this one you got handwritten in the back, yeah.
And so this is actually my appraiser request. So this was High Valley, so it used to be mine. Then it was handed off to Chris, where Chris left us first week, second week in June? Anyhow, Laura had forwarded him an email from Mr. Gardner. And then somehow it slipped through the crack. When Chris left, it didn't get forwarded to me, so I never called him back. So then he emailed Laura back again on the 29th and said, "Still waiting for a call back." And so I got to that one, looked at it, and I'm looking at it, and I'm like, "Well, wait a minute. They were building a house on this, you know, last time I knew." So I didn't see a new construction memo, so something wasn't driving. So I went back through all of Chris's box and what have you. Well, there's a C O issued January 28th. So technically, so Chris had removed, he had put the house on the rolls. It should be in occupancy for 11 months.
Okay.
And so I am asking that you cancel the house value. I've got the values written at the bottom. And I will put this on the rolls, but I'm going to put it on the occupancy roll for 11 months.
A new construction.
Yes.
Okay.
And a little bit of value on the improvement that's left is a whole building.
So I would move that we accept the appraisers' recommendation on A A 22436.
And I'll second it.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Didn't we already do all the Jacob's Manor appeals? I thought we did all those.
We start where the check mark is.
Oh, got it. Okay. Where did that go?
No, I just didn't get it.
Okay, so next up is Dillenberg? Who's got that one?
That'd be me.
Okay.
So this was me going back through, making sure that I didn't miss anything, and I did. I apologize. So for A A 22429 was one that I just had to adjust their land grade and their dwell year for the homeowner. They weren't in line with everybody else around them.
So the new value then?
So the new value?
So we're going from the 42886 to 33627?
Correct.
Okay. Does that make sense? I would move that we approve the appraiser appeal and create the new market value of 330,627 on appeal A A 22429.
And I'll second that.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
The next one, Dudley Ward?
Dudley Ward, yes. So this is going to be A A 22430, 431, and 432. They're all valued as if.
Combined.
This one was a rare situation with some land surveying and lease and bounds didn't come through. So for the remainder of this, for this year, we're going to do this because I'm not sure if it was our issue that we missed it or if it was their issue for not turning it in.
Okay.
There's a significant difference.
So it's going to be, well, starting in '23, it'll be two separate parcels.
Well, we accept appraisers' evaluation, combined value on A A 22430. Is that right?
431 and 432. 22431.
431 and all three of those are the same thing, aren't they? It'd be 22431, 32, and 30.
And these are all Dudley Ward?
Correct.
Dudley.
You want the amended changes?
Got it, thank you.
Okay. It's been, I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Give me a second to sign these. I'm glad I only had to do, or elked, one day and not all of them. Richie Donner, is our next one?
Protest number A A 22437 won't be on your list.
No.
I forgot to give it a number. This gentleman called, and I was quite surprised at his land also, from what it was to last year to this year. And I was like, whoa. It was a clerical error. It got put in as two, one acre at full market value. And I needed to adjust that and back the buffer. So that's why there's a significant difference there.
So you had two parcels instead of one?
Well, it was one parcel, the two acres. And so the 1.6175 was valuing at a full market value, just like the one acre home site. And I didn't put it in at the buffer.
Buffer, right.
Yeah.
Well.
That was my first year, so I just want you guys all to know.
Oh, that's why he's quite happy.
Won't hold you accountable, anyway. We all make errors.
I'll take responsibility.
I'll make a motion to approve Appraiser's reevaluation on A A 22437.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Doug, you've got all that. And then Elmo and Charlotte Nelson Family Trust. But multiple ones here.
There's two of them under their names. So there's A A 22434 and A A 22435. And both of these parcels were in the wrong land category. And then on top of that, they have the no access and topography off of Burnt Wagon Road up there, where the road really doesn't go.
Okay.
That's where their parcels are. And they were in incorrect category. And then that poor category was valuing way too high. We had a whole bunch of appraiser appeals at the beginning. Those, these two got missed. Along with Clarence Nelson, same.
This was an appraiser appeal?
Yes. Request, I'm not sure what.
Request? I'm calling anyway. I would move that we approve A A 22434 and A A 22435 for the appraisal appeal on the Elmo and Charlotte Nelson Family Trust.
Which one, 34, 33, and 35?
No, 34 and 35. Under those names, we'll do the next one that's a different individual.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that one last one, Clarence Nelson.
Clarence Nelson, A A 22433. And he is in the same situation, had the wrong land category. So I corrected it to reflect the no access and topography.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Appraiser's evaluation on A A 22433.
Second that. Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right, I am done.
As far as I know, we are done. We have not gotten any more appeals in. If we get anything after today and it's legitimate, we'll have to do a value cancellation.
Okay.
But unless we find errors that we have made, which does come up occasionally, we are done.
Okay.
So we can.
So we can officially close.
Yes. Today is the deadline finish.
Perfect. And I would move that we adjourn the order of equalization for 2021's appraisals.
I'll second that.
Was that '22? It is 2022, okay. All right, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Very much.
Good job, everyone.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
It was a group effort.
Now you can take your vacation.
Now we have to start our field work. We have 15 minutes before we.
You missed the deadline, lady.
We've got 15 minutes here. So we received an email. Did you get it? Let's take a chance to read it. I just got your email, too, so give us a chance to read.
Well, I think attachments are with now with that one.
I brought copies. I just wanted you to have those electronic maybe for later download or. I'm talking about my emails.
I'm not sure.
Well, there's another, Ilah Golden. We received an email from her.
Oh. See her on the email I sent you. She's the contact.
So it's just something that we need to anticipate because it's a three-year or so process. And by initiating it, and it would have to come from the county level to IDWR for that, that there is interest in the county to explore that, that should be on the books for them.
So that's.
Dana, what is the cost associated with doing this?
I don't think we know, we don't know. And there's, there is some cost information in this. I will leave this with you. But this, it sounds like this letter needs to be edited for Kayla.
So I'm reading Kayla's response right now, and it says, and so I have some questions. "I suspect final results will show further opportunity in the salmon." So is that Valley County?
Yeah. Yes, we're just, yes.
Sound River Mountains, yeah.
So and this is just a printed copy of that, so you can see the contacts and.
Okay, so this.
Have you seen that?
Yes. You, so this would be either Department of Water Resource project, really wouldn't be a county, but you're asking for county, a letter from the county to support moving forward in Valley County with this?
You're interested in exploring that opportunity for the county.
No commitment.
No commitment. You're interested in exploring.
Maybe I can help. Basically, we went through a period of intense drought last year. We didn't have much runoff. And then, so we, and we didn't have much inflow into the lake. And what we did have was pretty warm water. So then all of a sudden this year, we end up with a tremendous amount of spring runoff and rains, and we ended up getting all the flushing action from the landscape. So one of the, there's a lot of different things that can help Lake Cascade. And this is one that just needs to be evaluated. We're not saying right now that it's, that it needs to be done. But we do need to evaluate whether or not it's something that can be done in the future and really help the water quality. So if we can even out those extremes with cloud seeding. cloud seeding, that's what this is about. Now, water users, the irrigation people, they're about more water. And other entities, Idaho Power, they're about more water for generation. But the reason we're here today is, this is another tool that we need to look at that might be useful in the future to balance out these problems that we're having.
That helps clarify a little bit for me. We're not committing to cloud seeding. What we're actually being asked or to do is to at least support the research and development, possible development.
Right.
I'm trying to read everything. Unfortunately, we didn't have it in time to be able to read it. But so what she is telling me is, it may require stakeholders to develop a funding mechanism to help support some of the costs. They provide 20% to 30% in other basins of the funding program, which is a total cost of about $650,000 in annual operations. So that would be 130,000 to 180,000 or something in annual operations. Thirty-three percent of that is covered by Idaho Power if they can use it in their hydro power operations, which would, would any of that water hit Lake Cascade?
Oh, the salmon up in the north corner where it actually goes into Payette, and some of it would actually hit Lake Cascade.
But I think those topics are even premature. I think we just need you to make contact with IDWR to say, we're interested in looking at this. The cost and all of that, that will be something that they will have to research and come up with. And in that, at that time, it's an action item for county. I think the contact has to be made between commissioners and IDWR, that there is an interest in investigating this as a tool.
So that's really a pretty simple request on their part, is we just want, we want you to support your activities to take a look at this. Bring us recommendations back to the county, or all counties really that's involved.
As I understand it, the next step is for the county to make that contact with the Department of Water Resources to express that interest in that exploration. We don't know yet if it's going to be good for the county.
Right.
But we're asking them to look into that.
Research.
But that request has to come from you as opposed to the.
In other words, they don't just do it automatically around the state. They wait for local entities to request their, look at their support there.
I just wished I had a little more information. You're asking me to make a decision based upon nothing. So that's always the hard part. So we're opening a conversation with IDWR. And that is something that, I mean, obviously, if it would help Lake Cascade, I'm all in. I just don't, you know, I mean, she's telling me that this may or may not work. We can open a conversation, but I'm not committing to anything right now until I have a lot more information than that right now.
And that's what, you know, we had our February presentation from them. This is, that presentation is just to begin the education process for the county to see if that's something that should be considered as a tool for the water.
I need to be on the microphone.
Yeah, I think the, I think the critical part is, is it won't happen unless a local county asks Idaho Department of Water Resources to go ahead and start looking.
But what are we really asking? What are we really asking for?
Just asking them to explore the option for this county. Is it feasible for this area?
Yeah. Yeah. Is it something that we need? Otherwise, they're not going to do it if it doesn't come requested. Yeah.
And what she is stating is, these are preliminary. So it's, they don't even know what's going to be out there until January of 2023.
Correct.
So we're asking them to do something right now that they don't, this won't happen until next year, best case scenario.
So we invited the presentation back in March, again, for you to look at. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to look at that, but this is that same presentation.
I'd entertain a motion.
Chairman, I apologize. This was not an action item. It was just presented as.
It's a presentation.
Presentation.
So is an action item required for?
If we have a vote on anything, an action item is required.
I think maybe the way to move forward to that, if this sounds practical, is for maybe you to prepare a letter of request to Idaho Department of Water Resources for the county commissioner's signature. Does that make sense? That way, we have something to read, and we know what we're signing. And that would be on a future.
A specific request.
Yeah.
The first step would be for you to look at that link and look at what.
That will give us time to do that, Driena.
Yeah.
I feel much more comfortable with that anyway, so.
The way, that happens quite often. We get the letters with, ready to sign, and then we have some research here before that. Yeah.
We are not asking for you to sign anything here today.
No, okay.
So we did invite you to that presentation, February 3rd, and then came and attended the commissioners' meeting and provided that information again. And so this is our third contact on that. So I'm not sure. Would that just be the commissioners exploring that for them?
Well, at this point, it's a matter of writing a letter that the commissioners can send in to IDWR.
That would start the process.
We're interested. We would like to look at this further.
Yep.
But first, I think you have to look at the material.
Yes. I want to, before I say, we're interested, you know, I mean, that's an action statement. We're interested. We want you to take this forward. It's, I want to know exactly what we're looking at. After reading her letter, I definitely want to talk to Kayla before, you know, we move forward with something, so.
That was the action, I guess, we were looking for, is for you to make contact with Kayla.
I will definitely reach out to Kayla and have a conversation and maybe, you know.
Yours talking to him doesn't start anything, though. Only thing that's going to start something is a letter for us to sign. Is that right?
And we all have to agree, you know, we need a vote, the three of us, if it's not here.
Right.
But that we are interested in this, in wanting to move forward.
So that's important that they bring that back as an action item. Yeah. Sense?
Just to change gears just a little bit while we have you. You mentioned earlier that on Wednesday, from 12 noon until 6:45 PM, over at the American Legion Post, there's going to be a group of agencies that will have tables set up to answer questions to the public for the algae situation and the bloom outbreak that we had a couple of weeks ago. Wanted to let you know that this is the latest satellite imagery, which is all gray, meaning that it's below detection.
Awesome.
Now, this doesn't necessarily get into some of the narrow channels like Boulder Creek and some of the backwater areas, but things look great right now.
Oh, great.
One other thing is that the water temperature that we've had out here in the last couple of weeks is about 10 degrees cooler than what we had a year ago, and about five degrees cooler than what we had a couple of years ago, two years ago. So the water is cold. And I can attest to that because I was in it on the 5th, at least for a short period of time until it got too cold.
Because of all of the rain.
It's because of all the rain and the snowmelt. We had a great snowpack up there.
Late snowpack.
A late snowpack. Right.
I think we're all really interested in Jordan Messner's, you know, ideas about cooling some of the water that's coming into the lake. I don't know where you guys are at with that, or.
We've been on a working group with Jordan. And what we've been working on is looking at ways of diverting about 200 CFS of Gold Fork, which is cold water, going back into the reservoir rather than going off on the irrigation ditch for Gold Fork. But then giving Gold Fork Irrigation District warmer water out of the lake. So, and the reason that 200 CFS is important is, the actual flow in the reservoir during the winter time in our stagnant time period is about 200 CFS. And what they do in June is they actually ramp that up for the augmentation flow, the salmon augmentation flow. And then they move it up to about 2,000 CFS. Well, the other, the other interesting thing this year, and how it actually fits in the bloom and what happened, is the actual flow because of flood fears went up to 4,000 CFS. So it was double the augmentation flow for a short period of time. It was only for a few days. But the disturbance in the reservoir isn't understood. None of us really know how much disturbance of the bottom and things of that nature occurred. We do know from satellite imagery that the bloom actually started up in the north part of the lake. This is a sequence of satellite imagery. So we know that the bloom started, and this is dated on the 16th of June, up here in the northern part of the lake. That happens to be an area where the velocity flow of the tributaries dies off, and the more sediment is deposited because the flow of the rivers hit that wide expanse of the lake. So we know it started up in that area and progressed down to the southern part of the lake where it was very intense. And it came on extremely quickly because we were following this back on the 16th. And we typically see this kind of thing happen with light density of cyanobacteria. But this year, it actually, it almost exploded on the 21st. And I don't know the particular reason for that, other than we have a lot of nutrients that came in with the runoff. But we also stopped the storms during that weekend of the 18th, 19th time period. And we ended up with brilliant sunlight and cyanobacteria. All these phytoplankton really like sunlight to produce. So we had very intense sunlight days, clear, no clouds. And we had a lake full of nutrients. And we had some of the seed from the cyanobacteria, and it just all popped.
Maybe we flushed out the system a little bit. Let's hope. Cleaned out the pipeline.
Right. At any rate, I just wanted to let you know that the lake looks really good right now. And I wanted the public to know that they can get their answers tomorrow, Wednesday, over at the American Legion Post. And you're going to meet some of the people who I go to when I have questions with DEQ. Some of the true experts on cyanobacteria will be there. So thank you.
So my understanding from the conversation was that DEQ is no longer going to declare the health emergencies. They've given it to the central district health?
That's correct. They're, they actually, the health, my understanding is, the health department always had the role of issuing health advisories. And they depended on DEQ's testing. But in the past, they've actually given advisories together. That's changed. The other thing that's changed is DEQ had a testing system where they could put an advisory out or advise a health district. If the mass exceeded a certain level, right now, the recreational threshold is 40,000 cells per milliliter. So anything over that, it's like we went up to in the millions of cells per milliliter. They have issued advisories based on that in the past. And they've issued advisories based on the toxin testing. Now, there's new testing that DEQ is doing. They're actually looking at genes. So this round of sampling that they did, they actually looked at toxins, and they looked at the cyanobacteria genes and determined through DNA that this particular cyanobacteria, which is Delicosporum, this one during this, this stage, didn't have the genes to produce toxins.
Interesting.
So it's getting, we're all getting more educated on this as time goes on. Now, that didn't help the UP factor for the 4th of July, because a lot of people saw that split pea looking soupy water and surely didn't want to go in it. I was one of them prior to the 4th of July. We saw a rapid decline, and we looked at the toxin testing, the gene testing, secu depth, which is water clarity, where it measures the biomass in the water column. We looked at the satellite photos, and my family and I decided we could go in the water on July 3rd. So we were in the water on July 3rd. We were in the water on July 5th, until it got too cold for me to stay in, and I got out. Because it's still below my threshold for water coldness.
Smart man.
So at any rate, we are getting more educated in the public. Hopefully, we'll become educated on Wednesday, talking to some of the true experts on this issue.
It's been really interesting.
It is. To me, it's very interesting.
I want to underscore again that 30th meeting, August 30th, because that is the results of the VOR study. And again, those same agencies that will be here Wednesday will be participants in that meeting as well.
Is it a Zoom meeting, or is it, where is it?
It's at the EOC is what we have it booked at right now.
August 30th? Do you know what, is it all day, or?
Yes.
Okay. And what would I call it?
It's part of our water operations work group. We had the two previous meetings. So this is the USBR modeling study report.
Users, agriculture users, are they part of that?
The irrigation districts, the water master, they're all part of this group as well.
Put it on my calendar.
Okay. But then, we won't want to know anymore about water, will we? Except she has it somewhere every day.
All right. Thank you. We'll look at this. And so.
Also, for the record, I'd like it on the record that we have the current septic pump out pilot, because we also.
Driena, will you do the microphone so that the news media can hear you?
Okay.
We get hollered at when people don't stand.
So we've, we've, we just completed the West Mountain fence. We have the South End fence that was just completed. Those are both riparian fences, livestock exclusion fencing. We have the septic pump out pilot that's going on within the South Lake Recreational Sewer District.
Have you gotten people to step up for that?
Response.
It's been disappointing. That's one of the reasons why we wanted to mention it here, is people over there can save $200 on a septic pump out. So it's important, number one, that people pump their systems every three to five years, like the agency's request. But here, there's opportunity to save money.
So a question here, maybe that might help a little bit, is how can you alleviate some of these people's concern about being targeted for. about being targeted for future action? I mean, I think that's a big part of it, is what I understand. So.
Yeah, because it's pre-eighty-six.
Yeah, they don't, they, they like to fly under the radar as long as they can. And so how can we alleviate their concerns about being part of this program? Yeah.
I guess the only way I can respond to that is the information goes to South Lake Sewer District. And to Valley Soil and Water Conservation District. There is not a link to the Health Department on this data.
Okay. So they can't be targeted specifically to clean your act up?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I think, I think that's a problem with some of them.
It is a problem. Some of my friends that live over there have mentioned that to me. And I say, well, just go ahead and pump your system out and don't, don't participate in the program. Your idea is to get that septic system pumped.
Pardon your attention, do it.
Everybody wants to do, everybody wants it to be cleaned up, but then at the same time, you don't want to all of a sudden wake up some morning with somebody standing at the door telling you you gotta spend five thousand dollars to fix your problem. So, you know, that's something that maybe needs to be pretty clearly thought out from when they, when you bring these on board. Yeah.
I really hope the South Lake Sewer and Water does not disband. I saw the.
Thank you for that.
Newspaper. I, we just have to find a path forward because it's just, it's just not an acceptable choice.
Really important to get that cleaned up.
And I think, not in my lifetime, but down the road, there's going to be grants available to take care of this.
Who's grants available right now?
I don't know if they qualify. That's the problem.
Because it's a second homeowner community, not a primary rural community. There's rural community money.
So the ARPA funds that are out there that the state has specifically identifies that?
The rural programs through DEQ specifically won't handle the amount of tourist cabins. Their, their programs are oriented for full-time rural areas. But I do think that's going to change at some time in the future.
Or the Cascade and the South Lake will partner together and do the right thing and create one entity.
I think that's a conversation we have to keep active is, is that South Lake District.
I agree.
Yeah. So, well, it kind of throws a little different light on it, you know, when you hear.
And again, we.
It's important to have an organization.
We explored um, grant funding for a tracer study. Nobody wants to fund monitoring. So that's, that's a tough one too, but that one would indicate whether those inputs are coming from septics or.
Yeah.
Like what's the cost to do something like that?
It was twenty thousand dollars. The, the last grant that we applied for was turned down.
From the commission because it wasn't an agricultural mismanagement practice.
Yeah.
Hey, boy, oh, boy.
We're, we've got lots of efforts out there.
Yeah.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So Madam Chairman, you, you had asked a question regarding, I guess, getting this back on. A commissioner's agenda for a decision to be made regarding if they wanted to reach out to Idaho Department of Water Resources. If the commissioners want to review the information that was provided back in March today, then let me know when we want it on an upcoming agenda and we can move in that direction.
John Villahog, thirteen oh three Fondrosa in McCall, and I'm also a board supervisor. I would just like to give our, the board appreciation for all the commission, your commission does for us. And the support that you give us on the requests that we come forward with and all that. So. Um, and, and we're just trying to bring the information, keep the information coming to you so you, you can see what's going on. And then what we're dealing with, trying to.
Yeah.
See if we can kind of come up with a solution to the problem and all that. So. And if we can help you on that, on the letter of support or whatever is needed for this next thing.
Yeah.
Uh, going forward with the cloud seeding, let us know and, and we'll help.
So we have about, about two minutes left on this, uh, just on this subject. Can, can we propose a date, Mr. Clerk, uh, for getting, bringing this back? As opposed to waiting to, on that one, is a couple of weeks or so, three weeks? Reasonable time, come back with this letter and that kind of thing. In other words, give us a chance to do our research. You guys bring the letter to us and we can set a date, maybe in two weeks, maybe three weeks?
We have August first, Miss Commissioner Allen. It'd be in three weeks.
Yeah, that's great.
Well, I'd like to, yeah, let's do that. Put it on for August the third. Then that way we all know what the next date is.
August first. And I appreciate that. And as you can tell, I, I'm a person that likes to research things.
Sure.
When I'm gonna vote on something, I have to understand what it is I'm asking for and understand what I'm voting on. I owe that to my constituents to be fully informed. And I don't like, you know, I, I, you can tell from. I mean, most time I'm really easy to get along with, but don't ask me to do something unless I've had my chance to research it.
Understand.
Cause that's when I get frustrated.
Yeah. No, we'll be, we'll be willing to help the way we can on that.
Anyway, appreciate what you guys are doing. Boy, I tell you what, it takes a lot to let stick, stick through one of the meetings.
I've been there. I was the one before you got it. I understand it.
It's like a college course, you know?
It is. Yeah. There's a lot of information there and that's, you know, unfortunately, it's not just your committee. I mean, all the committees we're on, it takes an enormous amount of research. And so when we get something last second, it's like, guys, I need time. Um, my six committees I'm on takes a lot of time and effort to do research work. So.
I understand totally. I know what you're up here. But thank you.
All right. Thank you, John.
Okay, moving on. We have a conversation on brownfields partnerships.
One second, Madam Chairman.
Hi, Beth. Can you hear us? Not yet. Beth, can you hear us?
Nope.
Beth, can you hear us? Can you type her in the chat and ask if she can hear us? Are we muted? Nope, we're not muted. So do you have yours up or your speakers on?
I, can you hear me right now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Okay, I can hear you now. I couldn't hear you for a little bit.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Well, welcome. I'm Sherry Mopin, Senate Commissioner.
And I'm Commissioner Allen.
Thank you for joining us. This is an important conversation. And I'm hoping that you're going to show me. I, at one moment in time, I had researched all the brownfield sites in Valley County and I can't seem to get there any longer. So I don't know, I doubt they've been cleaned up, but maybe. So the floor is yours. What can we learn about brownfield sites today?
I do have, sorry, excuse me. I do have two other people that are supposed to be joining us. So I'm hoping that they do that soon. But um, yeah, so, so it sounds like you do have some familiarity with the brownfields program. Like you have been a part of it before and been, um, been able to see some of the benefits from it. Is that correct?
Well, what I was researching was, uh, we were looking for opportunities um, for ground purchase to put daycares on. And my understanding was um, that Kelly's Whitewater Park was in a brownfield. So I researched the maps on that and while doing so, realized that we had additional brownfield sites. So. It looks like Aaron is joining us. There we go.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
We can, Aaron. Can you hear us?
I am so sorry I'm late. We had some technical difficulties in the conference room and couldn't uh, couldn't connect. So Eric's gonna be joining me in my office. And I'm going to rearrange my stuff so everyone can be in the same frame. So bear with me.
I totally understand. Zoom is great until it's not.
Cause I'm moving this around.
So you guys are all with DEQ, is that correct? Correct. Okay.
Yeah. Eric Trainer should be joining me shortly. Uh, but we can just go ahead for right now. And just to, just to introduce myself, I am uh, the DEQ Boise Regional Office Administrator. My name is Erin Sheff. And of course, that's the only one who managed to make it on time. And she's our brownfield specialist in the regional office. Uh, Eric Trainer is, um, is the statewide brownfield program manager. And the reason why we wanted him on the call today is because he is intimately familiar with the environmental covenant on the, um, the old Boise Cascade sites.
Perfect.
And I am, I'm paying attention, but I'm texting him right now to let him know that I made it in on my machine and he can come to my office.
Okay, perfect. Well, we appreciated Beth reaching out and um, bringing again this to our attention and I. So one of the things that in learning about this, the, the research that I was doing on that old Boise Cascade site for Kelly's Whitewater Park was we were looking for sites potentially to put a daycare. And I was told you could not have a daycare on a brownfield site. And then I got additional information that said you could. So I'm a little confused on what we can and cannot do, what we can build on it. And then to go a little bit more broadly, um, if there is a map of existing brownfields in Valley County.
Okay. So those are all good questions. And I'm going to handle the first one very generically and say that you can pretty much put whatever you want on a brownfield as long as the site conditions meet that use. So for instance, in Fairfield, we were dealing with, uh, we, we, they needed to expand their public water system there and, and also to have a new well and also have additional water storage. And um, so we went there. It was, it was an old sawmill and we were cons- similar to Boise Cascade, but just on a much smaller scale. And we went there and, and collected our samples and did our thing and didn't find anything that was uh, too terribly scary. And so uh, they actually made it through the whole public water system process to be able to put uh, a portion of their public water system on a brownfield site. Uh, so that is probably the most extreme example of, of something that has the potential to um, be deleterious to public health that we've placed on a, on a, on a brownfield site, on, on a brownfield site. I mean, a public drinking water system on a brownfield site is, I think, one of the more remarkable things we've done in Idaho. But the reason we were able to do it is because the conditions met the use. Um, now you're asking about a daycare center on a, on a brownfield site? Absolutely not going to be a problem if the conditions of the property um, are such that, that it's safe for residential use. And I am not as experienced with the environmental covenants um, out, out there on that property as Eric is. But I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, one of the biggest issues for that was um, a prohibition against groundwater extraction. And we had to work, and by we, I mean predominantly Eric, worked um, worked with the uh, the Recreation District there for months at one point in time to, and here's Eric now, uh, to kind of reopen those, that environmental covenant and see what the property could be used for. What the property could be used for and, and to see if uh, we could fit the use of that geothermal pool and, and still have the property be safe for public use. And we were able to do that. So there are ways to, to, to get around and address these things as long as the conditions at the property uh, are appropriate for the use. Uh, so, so there was that. Um, so that's your first question. The second question I think would be best directed at Eric, who has now joined us because that's going to be a little bit more specific to what, what you folks are dealing with there. And then we can go on to your third question after that. So could, just for Eric's uh, sake, could you repeat your second question, please?
I'm trying to think what it was. So my question had to do with.
I think it was the inventory, maybe?
Well, yeah. It was just, you know, looking at a map and actually finding out where there are brownfield sites in Valley County. At one point in time, I was able to find that map. Now I can't. I think you guys have an updated portal, maybe.
Yeah, there, I don't think there's a map that's gener- that's been generated specifically for Valley County. That may have been the Teradex.
I mean, the only, I mean, as far as any mapping would be for brown, for brownfields where money has been spent out of the brownfields program budget, that would be on DEQ's website, which is the, which is uh, hosted by Teradex. And then the, any, any monies that's been spent by brownfields funds, those are the sites that would be on that map. But other than that, we don't have any mapping that's gone on. What we can do is we can provide at a, at a community's request to map uh, and provide figures of potential brownfield sites, sites that have not been assessed or maybe have been assessed under another DEQ program. And then we can provide um, you know, site-specific or area-specific uh, uh, mapping of those, of those sites based on, you know, what generally is done is under phase one type of environmental assessment, which, you know, you look at uh, the Polk, Polk Directory, which uh, historical uses and those go back, you know, to whatever the property first got title. And then um, the sandboard insurance maps is another one that we utilize. And then after that, we go through and then do what's called a windshield survey to see whether the properties are um, blighted, underutilized. Or are they fully already, are they already fully in, you know, the, a, a developed stage? So uh, and then, you know, we've, we've done that for other communities. Um, certainly if that's a request that Valley County would have, we can look at that and, and get that done through one of our contractors. There is a, uh, there's a caveat to this because, you know, the, these, these sites, property owners get a little skittish. And so if you start labeling their sites as a brownfields or as blighted or anything like that, you know, they, they, they've, you know, some property owners will take that as an affront to their property values. So you, you really have to be careful with the information that we would provide on that. And so I just want to, I just want to throw that out there because we, we've kind of got, we've kind of got sideways with a couple of property owners in downtown Boise with that. And that's why we, you know, adjusted how we, how we do this. And so we do this as a community uh, requested basis, you know, and how we distribute this information. And that's why the, the information that we have in our, you know, kind of our inventory, it's, it's not, it's, it's not out on, in the public domain just because of that, because we've been threatened to be sued um, because of uh, potential property valuations being lowered because of a, a brownfields designation or a brownfields determination.
Yeah, yeah. Some people try to, to use that and, and historically across the country have, have successfully in the past been able to use that as a takings uh, type of argument. have, have successfully in the past been able to use that as a takings, uh, type of argument. Uh, so this is what Eric's talking about is an incredibly powerful planning tool and it's very, very useful. We just need to be, we, meaning DEQ, as well as the folks that we're dealing with, in this case, Valley County, you need to be very circumspect with the information that that contains because EPA does not even consider that tool that we have to be, uh, a public record that we would be required to disclose, uh, because of some of that sensitive nature and the potential for a, a takings argument. Um, and it's only used for planning purposes. So we don't label sites as brownfields unless the, um, unless the owner has requested it and it fits the definition, uh, or unless, uh, the property gets involved in one of our programs in some way, either federally or through the state. Um, so, but very, very, very powerful tool when you're planning for development in your community. And if that is something that you would be interested in, we can, we can turn Beth loose on that and, and we can work with your planners to determine what corridors or, you know, what portions of, of the county, uh, maybe even all of it, that, that you'd like us to take a look at.
Is there an associated cost with that?
Not to you.
Love it. And are planning administrators in the room with us? Uh, would that be helpful in the planning processes when we're looking at property to have that information?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and what would be helpful is, uh, for, for Valley County to kind of do a hierarchy of how, you know, what's, what are, you know, the first order priority sites, second order, third order, fourth order. You know, what are the sites that it, it's the county's most interested in and looking at? And then try, you know, categorizing those things and those sites into where we can, you know, put our, uh, uh, resources at. And then, you know, and, and do, and do that. That, that really, that really helps us. Instead of just throwing a whole bunch of it and just looking at every single site in Valley County, um, it would be very helpful if you guys, you know, kind of had a priority list and then kind of ranked them in terms of, you, like I said, just put them in, put them in tiers, whatever you wanna call it. Um, and, and then we can fo- we can focus on that and we can, we can take a measured approach based on those tiers.
Yep.
Because a lot of this, a lot of this boils down to what's the developer interest? Um, do you, you know, I mean, do you have, you know, for properties, are there, are there real developer interest in these properties? But they're holding back because, you know, they're concerned about potential contamination or something like that? I mean, it, it, because this, this program's all driven by, um, development. It's a, it's a, it's a, uh, property development program.
Yeah, it's, it's really interesting because this, this truly isn't an economic development program for the most part, but it's, you know, couched within environmental agencies because we are just specifically addressing the barriers, the, the environmental barriers to redevelopment. And we want to just come in and remove those barriers or make it as easy as possible for, for, for developers to deal with any environmental condition on the property. And we've had a really good track record of it.
So, uh, I'm Commissioner Allen. I have a couple of questions. I'd like to, I'm trying to sort this out in my mind of a value to us and how you identify these things. Um, Commissioner Mopkin mentioned, uh, daycare. And apparently there was some, if a daycare comes in and wants to develop, I mean, are there, is there a list maybe of, of, um, potential brownfield sites that people as a developer need to be cautious of moving forward? I mean, how do, how do we make this something that works for us? Because if I'm gonna come in and I wanna build something and say, I got a piece of ground I wanna build something, is there some way that you can go, well, yeah, you know, that's possibly a brownfield? Or it's not, I mean?
But that's, I'm, what I'm hearing is they're telling us that might put us at risk for takings because we tell somebody that.
No, but I'm not asking that. I'm, let's say I'm a developer and I'm going, I wanna build something here. So, so who's gonna trigger this thought process that just put potentially is a brownfield?
Sure, Commissioner. I, I, I can answer that. So I can answer that with, with, I can give you the perspective of what happens without a bro- brownfield program when you go through that. So let's say you're a purchaser, you're gonna purchase a property, you're gonna finance it through a bank. Most people do that kind of thing. Um, after the two thousand, uh, eight recession, the, the banks really, really tightened up their due diligence requirements, uh, for, for purchasing properties, specifically properties that, that were commercial or industrial in nature and, and could have some contamination on it. Basically, they don't want to have, uh, their mortgagees default and they end up getting stuck with, stuck with properties that are just grossly contaminated. So what happens is normally you, you know, the bank will require some level of due diligence, uh, from, from the person asking for, for the money, for the loan. And that's typically, uh, what's called a Phase One Environmental Investigation, Environmental Report. Um, it's largely sort of a paper-based exercise and they will do things like take a look at the sandborne maps and the Polk directories, uh, as well as our records, EPA records, um, fire marshal records, all kinds of records. And then they'll walk the site and they'll, they'll take a look at, you know, whether or not it has a well, how close that it might be to a drain field or other things like that. And then they'll produce a report that will essentially tell the bank whether or not there are any recognized environmental conditions on the property. So those would be conditions that could be a potential risk, uh, financially, um, due to environmental concerns. And, and if you end up with a Phase One that has recognized environmental conditions, uh, the bank could require what's called a Phase Two, which is where you actually go out and collect samples, soil samples, groundwater samples, indoor air samples, things like that, to determine whether or not the intended use of the property, uh, fits the current environmental condition. So that's how things work normally. Uh, with respect to the Brownfields program, the program actually contracts with one of our contractors to go out and do that work for us at no cost to the, to the applicant. And, and that may not sound like a big deal, but it actually is. A decent Phase One these days is gonna cost you at least bare minimum five thousand dollars. Phase Twos can be tens of thousands of dollars and often are. So fifty thousand dollar Phase Two is, is not out of the question on, on certain properties. And so those types of decisions are obviously have to be looked at very carefully by somebody who's looking to get involved in a property because they could be looking at spending anywhere from five to seventy-five thousand dollars just to figure out if the property's gonna work for their project. That's one of the huge values of our program is that we can use federal funds, not Idaho funds, federal funds, to come in and do those assessments at no cost, uh, so that we can figure out what the condition of the property is and whether or not it can be utilized in, in the manner that the developer is, is hoping to utilize.
That's, that's, uh, thank you. I appreciate that. I, I was just thinking, I'm saying, you're going, well, how do we use this? You know, what, when does, when does something trigger? And I think this is probably more, uh, appropriate in our planning department than maybe us directly. But how you, you trigger that? I mean, how do we trigger that thinking?
It, and- One of the, one of the things you're gonna need to realize, Commissioner, is, um, we cannot, Brownfields program cannot fund a private assessment on private property without a public entity, whether it be a city, the county, you know, an urban renewal district, recreation district, you know, something like that. So if the county is wanting to engage with the program, the county is gonna need to be willing to essentially sign off on the application and sponsor the application.
Okay, that's, that's really correct, yeah.
Now, can you tell me?
It's just a two-page, it's a two-page application. It doesn't put the county or the entity signing it. You know, they're not sign, you're, a- actually, you're not actually signing anything. You're just putting your, you're putting the name on it. It does not associate any liability. You're just basically saying, we're a public entity, we support this project. And in order for us to dot the i's across the t's, so to speak, we need to have that public and then also, you know, letters of support and things like that, um, to, to make that, make the project go forward.
And we've done that dozens and dozens of times where, where a, a public entity doesn't have any direct involvement in the project, but it's a benefit to the community that a facility be, uh, assessed and, and ultimately redeveloped. And so on these private-to-private deals where you're going from privately-owned property to a purchase to a private entity, that's when the public, uh, that's when the public entity, in this case potentially Valley County, uh, sends a letter or an email to DEQ saying, hey, we would like Property X to be assessed because we would love to see this property turn into a daycare. We, we really could use some additional childcare in, in our community, that kind of a thing.
Okay.
There, it, there is nothing that the county would need to do necessarily beyond that. We sort of take everything from there. Um, you could be as involved as, as, as you wanted, certainly, but, uh, most folks that we deal with are very content to have us come in with our contractors, produce a report, and then we kind of help explain what the report really means. Um, and there's just not a lot for, uh, for the public side to do, uh, when you're talking about these deals, but we still need that level of support.
Can you tell me what, if the City of Cascade, Donley or McCall have opened any kind of conversations with you? I mean, I know the City of McCall right now has a gas station that's moving to a new location. Uh, they're gonna have to do something with that old location and that would be a good question. And then actually, the, the, um, Kelly's Whitewater Park is inside the City of Cascade. I'm sorry, not all of that portion? Okay.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna let Eric take the, take that because he has had a lot of experience working, uh, in Cascade and with the City of Cascade and with the rec district specifically around Kelly's, uh, Whitewater Park.
Yeah, as far to, to your first question, um, uh, as far as the gas station goes, um, that, that's probably gonna be covered under the, uh, underground storage tank program. Um, petroleum is a little bit different animal in, in the Brownfields realm. Uh, we can't, basically, it has to be two owners removed or a financial, you know, that they, they, they can, they, they have to prove that they don't have a, a financial ability to pay to do the removal or any cleanup that might need to be done subsequent, any removal of the, uh, underground storage tanks, dispensers and piping. Um, so that one's probably, that's gonna have, that one in McCall is gonna have to be handled by the, the gas station owner. Um, unless the Valley County, I don't know if it's up on, I mean, one, one, ano- I guess another one is that I've dealt with. I mean, I don't know if they're up against it on the taxes. So, you know, certain counties handle it certain ways. I mean, they'll, you know, the statute is after three years of back taxes, the county's supposed to foreclose and take, take the property back and then, you know, move, go through the process to auction it off and put it on the tax bill. So I don't know where that, that particular property sets.
It's not even a, I don't even, I don't even know, you know, I don't know anything about that. Uh, it's in the City of McCall. I was just wondering if McCall had, you know, reached out about it. It's not Valley County, it's not our deals.
That would be working with their underground storage tank program for them to pull the tanks and decommission the tanks and then, you know, and then also with their underground storage tank program, moving to a new facility. Um, so that would, that, that, you know, I mean, we, Brownfields potentially could get involved later on, but, uh, again, with the two owners removed and, and whether they, you know, show an inability to pay or the county takes a back-on-back taxes, Brownfields would not get involved in that project in McCall. Now, um, back to, so getting to Cascade, and could you restate the question about Kelly's Whitewater Park?
I, I just wondered. Isn't it, yeah, isn't it in Brownfield?
So I don't know. I mean, I sent, I sent to, uh, I don't know if it's Mr. or Ms. Miller, an email with a rough sketch of kind of the whole Cascade, former Cascade mill site, um, sketch out, uh, on Google Earth. So Kelly's Whitewater is basically, basically what you have is three sections. You have the north, what I call the North Forty, which is basically plus or minus forty-eight acres. Then you have the middle, what I call the Middle Twenty, and that's where the mill site, the actual mill site was. And then that's where just south of that would be the South Forty. And then that's where the, uh, um, the pool is and Kelly's Whitewater Park is. So DEQ at the time, I think it was in two thousand and seven, we did an assessment. Um, Aaron, Aaron actually was, you know, involved in that one. Uh, but we did an assessment. We did a, uh, you know, it's basically a soil assessment of that South Forty acres, which extends down into that access road and then what they call the runway, uh, which is the road that goes in there. Um, so, you know, we did some soil assessment and, you know, we found some elevated levels of basically metals. Um, other than that, we didn't really find anything on that. Cause that, you know, it's ba- that was, that was a lo- that was a log yard. That's where they stored, that's where they stored and sprinkled the logs for processing at the mill. Um, and then the, and then at that time, right after that, shortly thereafter, that's when the Picards came in and wanted to do, you know, Kelly's Whitewater Park. And so they wanted, you know, to do this, this purchase agreement with Office Max at the time. And, you know, so we, DEQ was under pressure to, you know, we, we felt a, additional assessment was needed. Essentially, the governor's office said, close the site. And so we put an environmental covenant on it because the Picards were calling the governor's office every other day. Um, and, you know, say, we need this site closed so we can get this moving forward. So we put it, you know, environmental covenant that essentially has activity and use limitations on the site. Um, and that was, that was able to get Kelly's Whitewater Park, uh, moving forward. And then also facilitated, you know, being able to have, you know, that four-acre carve-out for the, uh, the rec district to get their, their, their pool done. Um, and then there's also an environmental covenant on that, what I call the Middle Twenty. And that's the former, um, mill site, uh, where they did the processing. Um, there was an ac- there was actually a cleanup done there. Um, and they, that was run through the voluntary, DEQ's voluntary cleanup program. Um, and so then that got done and signed off. And then there's also an environmental covenant on that Middle Twenty. Um, activity use limitations, you know, basically non-re- you know, non-residential uses are allowed. Uh, but that does preclude, uh, schools, daycares, hospitals, things like that. So, uh, same thing on the South Forty. Now, what's interesting is on that north, that northern section, that Northern Forty, north of the former mill site, that forty-eight plus or minus acres. So, let me see if I can get this straight. Because there was that whole Office Max Cloverdale deal and Office Ma- cause we had, the environmental covenants on the South Forty and the Middle Twenty are between DEQ and Office Max. And those are codified by state statute by the Uniform Environmental Covenant Act. So what Office Max did with Cloverdale, when Cloverdale went to purchase the whole enchilada, so to speak, the whole thing, when they were doing that processing and getting the Cloverdale gold, the Cascade gold out of there for their compost that they were coming down and selling in the Treasure Valley, um, for whatever reason, Cloverdale and Office Max did an environmental covenant on that North Forty. But it has no weight in law, but it is on the books. Um, but it's not enforceable. Um, there has not been any assessment on the North Forty. Um, we have not been involved. I mean, I've been in discussions. I've walked it a few times with different parties. I've walked it with the Picards, you know, and then when they bought it from Cloverdale, I walked it with those guys. Um, I've met, I've met, I've, you know, a few meetings with the Picards before they bought it. But, you know, just so you know, the enforceable environmental covenants are on the Middle Twenty, the former mill site, the South Forty. But that covenant that's on the North Forty, that is between Office Max and Cloverdale. DEQ is not a party to that.
Okay, I have your map now, so we can take a look at that.
Yeah, so it's not a part, so it's not, it, it's not- Yeah, so it's not a part, so it's not, it, it's not enforceable under uh the en- e- environmental Uniform Environmental Covenant Act. UECA, UECA is the acronym where we live in acronyms here. But uh with that north forty, even though if you have, so if you're planning people, you know, they did a search and they found covenant on the south forty, covenant on the middle twenty that I call it the former mill site. And then they found that covenant because it's gonna be attached to the deed. They found it on that north forty, that north forty one's not enforceable. It doesn't, DEQ would not enforce that covenant.
Hmm.
So for our information, I guess the, the main question here today is if we have somebody come in and they're wanting to do development and we have concerns about the former use of that, we just send them to you guys, you work with them. And we just, you guys have a program that may be able to help them mitigate whatever would be there, so.
Correct, yeah, and so, yeah, and that's my understanding, I mean, my last conversation with the Picards, and it's been a few years. Um, you know, you know, their, you know, their whole like, their whole concept was this, of this is like, they would basically buy all of it and then let the community decide what they wanted to do with it and then work through whatever structures through, you know, whether it be DEQ or whoever else. You know, and, and then the community has to kind of figure out what they want to do with it.
Sure, I think that that's still prevalent today, so.
Yeah.
I, I hesitate to just focus on the Picards, but, you know, what this conversation was really about is just if there are areas in the county that, you know, people are willing to purchase and, and redevelop, it behooves us to be able to give them names and, and contact information and people to speak with, so.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, again, it, it all, it all boils down to eligibility and whether the site's eligible or not. Because we do have, I mean, it's just not, we just can't, you know, every site that comes in the door, we just can't do. We have to look through the eligibility, which is gonna be, you know, the site history, site background. Like I said, petroleum is a, is a uh, a little bit of a different animal in the Brownfields program and, and that has some higher hurdles to clear to, in order to make the site eligible. Um, but we, we, we will uh, we will review and we will take any, any, any site into consideration. Um, again, it's an economic redevelopment program, so, you know, we, we would prefer that, you know, we have sites that, you know, we have, that, that have active, active interest in them.
Hmm.
Um.
And it doesn't have to be for-profit businesses either. I mean, we talking green belts that you can put in, I mean, all kinds of different things, so.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's, yeah, it's not just, it's just not commercial de- redevelopment or residential redevelopment, it can be anything.
In fact, in fact, our newest state park is a, is a former brownfield site.
Huh.
So, yeah, but yeah, I mean, we've done, and we've done like, you know, rails to trails things as well in northern Idaho and Coeur d'Alene, we've done rails to trails. Um, so yeah, it's, it's, it's the whole gamut, so just, just don't, you know, don't tunnel vision yourself into just residential or commercial. But if you've got some, you know, other concepts, you know, that might, you know, need our assistance to just kind of look at to make sure that it's, you know, we don't, you don't have any issues there and, and get the, get the city or the county on, on the hook for a liability standpoint, you know, let us know and bring this in and we can kind of see. I mean, I'm helping the city of Haley right now within a former dump site um along the Bigwood River. And we're gonna, we're gonna do some work there to facilitate, you know, water calming issues for the Bigwood River to reduce, you know, mitigate flooding issues down, downstream uh, you know, through the Bu- Bigwood after what happened in two thousand seventeen. So there's all kinds of different, like I said, I mean, you know, and I don't know, I mean, in Idaho, in the old days, if you lived by the river, you dumped by the river. You lived in the desert, you dumped in the desert. So, um, I mean, if you've got some old unregulated dump sites along, along the river that you want to have looked at, I mean, I know we've looked at stuff kind of north in, in Cascade. We've looked, we've looked at stuff north there. Um, that old dump site where the uh RV park is, um, didn't really find anything, but um, but I mean, those are just, those are things that we've dealt with. Um, so it really just depends on what the vision you guys have, priorities you have, um, and what you guys want to do. And we'll, you know, bring, bring something to us, we'll consider it and, you know, look at the concept and, you know, and s- and see what we, and see what we have there and, and then work, and work through any of the issues. And if we can make the project work, we'll make the project work.
Yeah, yeah, and Commissioners, I'd have to say that Eric is probably the best problem solver I've ever seen with respect to getting sites to fit into the program. And that's saying a lot because I actually started the program. And so Commissioners, if your, if your goal was to get faces and names that could interface with people, whether it be your planning department or, or private entities looking to, to develop sites around your county, these are the three best people to be talking to, Beth, Eric and me, so.
And I appreciate it, Beth reaching out. Beth started this and I really appreciated her reaching out and seeing if there was, you know, interest in a conversation. And anytime we can be informed and engaged, that's a positive thing. So I know a little bit more than I did before and hopefully Ed does also. Uh, we do have your contact information, so that's great.
It sa- it sounded like it's just a good way to alleviate maybe a lot of anxiety on part, people that are trying to look for a place. So well, before you, you know, before you turn that off, go, go talk to you guys, you know, and see what, see what you can do there.
Exactly right, and, you know, and the other thing too is, you know, I, half my life has been spent living in rural communities, half my life's been spent living in cities, and they have their own unique challenges when it comes to brownfields. But one of the things that's always really bummed me out about, uh, I came from the Rust Belt in Ohio. So many of our small towns there, you'd end up with one or two businesses that, that died and then that cancer just spread throughout the whole town. And you ended up with a, a, basically a cord out downtown of all these, you know, really nice old, you know, two hundred year old towns. And uh, that's something that I never want to see happen to rural Idaho. So we want to aggressively start moving this program into, into more rural communities uh so that you can take advantage of maybe some of the underutilized spaces that you have in, in, in the cores of your towns, in your county. And I know that there's not a lot and I know that the property values are increasing, um, but still, the idea of a, a developer, you know, eating potentially ten thousand to a hundred thousand dollars just to figure out if they want to get involved in a property is sometimes too big of a hurdle to get past and we can help with that.
Good.
And we're happy to come up and visit anytime. If you want to show us a, a potential project or you want us to meet people, you know, Beth and I can get in a car and come up and, and meet with you.
Yes, so what, what particular time of year do you like coming to Val?
Yeah, do you want us to make that the summer or the winter?
Look, I, I actually just drove back from uh Ponderosa State Park with my family yesterday. No, I, I recreate heavily in Valley County and I know Eric and his family do too. So I, I'll come up there whenever, as long as I can get there safely.
October and early November's out.
Yeah, okay.
Cause you're hunting up here. You're already here, I got it.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you so much for your time, thanks Beth for setting this up.
And I apologize uh that, that, that we were tardy due to technical issues and uh, you know, hopefully next time we can talk face to face.
No worries, Beth had you.
This works.
Yeah, thanks Beth.
All right, have a great week, thanks guys.
Thanks folks.
I'm gonna forward you the map that they just sent and all their contact information is on there. Love the guy that was blowing bubbles. Hey, Doug, you changed.
I did.
Okay.
You were focused, you missed it.
We've got five minutes before we start our strategic plan for cybersecurity. Do you have, Jeremy had sent us all of the current cybersecurity plans that he could find? Do you have those? Ed, do you have those?
What's that?
Jeremy had sent us all of the cybersecurity plans that he has.
So I had a message here, I haven't, you know, I haven't been able to get to yet.
All right, we can probably rid of the Teams meeting. Hey, you gonna join us too? Our little cybersecurity? Awesome. That is awesome. Pat, do you know, are any of these uploaded into the strategic plan? Oh, sorry, um, these are plans that Jeremy actually found from David. And so I, and there's some dates around them on when, I guess David was gonna plan on doing some of this? Thank you, I'm hearing you. I'm. I am going to forward you this. I kept waiting for Eric to blow a bubble. He kept playing with his gum and I'm going, totally is forgetting where he's at right now and he's gonna start blowing bubbles. That was pretty funny. All right, this is gonna be an hour if we need a break really quick.
Oh, cool, so.
There.
Want to make a motion to go into the executive or?
Yep. I move that we go into executive session for IDO code seven four two oh six one D to consider records that are exempt from disclosure as provided in chapter one, title seventy-four IDO code, our cybersecurity plan.
I'll, I'll second that.
All in favor? I roll call vote, Mop and I.
Alan.
All right, we will be in executive session for the next hour.